Chat.
Okay. I'd like to please call to order the Board of Education meeting for Celine Area Schools for March 22nd, 2022 at 6:30 PM. If everyone could all please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all and welcome. Just a very quick note, Secretary Jones will be our recording and our board secretary tonight, so Betty Yankee is off, so she will be on her computer for our meeting tonight. This is our first opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. The presiding officer is guided by the rules set forth in Policy Number 167.3, which has been reprinted on the public comment form collected this evening. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. I am seeing no public comment forms. Is that correct, Miranda? You didn't get any more? Okay. Seeing no students and seeing no community stakeholders, we will move on to a quick response to public comment. We always value your feedback. If you can email us at sasboard@celineschools.org, or use the Let's Talk feature on the Celine Area Schools website, we would appreciate it. Moving on, I would like to revise one edit to our agenda. If we look at our consent agenda, Item F, number three, it should read Field Trip 2021, Number 111 SWWC versus Debate Competition. There's a redundancy in typing there. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as revised for consent.
I'll make it.
Support, McGee.
Okay. Brad, thank you. Michael, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 7-0. Moving on to our student showcase, if we could have Shyla, Steve, would you like to introduce?
Yeah, we're really proud to have Shyla Smith coming up to talk to us about her award with Just Write Michigan Junior Contest Award winner, and she's going to talk about how this played out, and it's great to see what our students are doing. So, Shyla, take it away.
Hello, my name is Shyla Smith, and today I'll be presenting to you about the Just Write Michigan Contest. In January, I was, Mrs., the Just Write Michigan Contest is a contest for students through grades 6th through 12th to present, to write a story about, and this year it was about the unexpected arrival. Students were further given the challenge to write about either fiction or sci-fi. It, the prize was for an Amazon gift card and was for these, and was sponsored by Sienna Heights. The process that I took to write this story was first, Mrs. Gates, my LA teacher, sent, told me that I could write a story, and so I wrote this, so I decided that I was going to take the opportunity to write a story, and so I wrote this story and then gave it to Mrs. Gates to edit. And then we turned it in, and one evening, Mrs. Washington called my mom to tell me that I had won the contest. The story was about a girl and a boy named Fauna and Talon who were, who were trying to escape their laboratory which had created them and put them together with multiple animals. Fauna was nine different animals, including owl and human, and Talon was, is half owl and half human. And so, in the story, they had escaped and flown away, and, but then later, they had gotten captured. Creating the story, I had at night thought of the story for the escape and then wrote it down and had, and then later on, I chose the title and it, the escape, because it had fit the theme of the story, which was, or the plot of the story, and, yeah. Later, I chose the characters' names, and I had chosen Fauna for, the name means multiple animals, and she is multiple animals. And Talon, because it means bird claw, which is, fits his, the animals that he, he is. And then later, and then before we turned it in, Mrs. Gates had edited the story and we turned it in together. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Shyla, you're in eighth grade, if you have Mrs. Gates?
Yes.
Excellent. Can you, can you do me a favor and turn around? I think somebody might like to get a picture of you up at the...
That's great.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any, any comments for Shyla? Is it published, and where can we read it?
It is not published, but if you go to the Just Write Michigan Contest website, you can, it'll be on their front page, and if you scroll down a little bit, you will find the story.
Great. I can't wait to read it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are you, sorry, are you interested in doing like more writing? Did this inspire you in any way?
I think it, like, I've always like wanted to be a writer, and I think it just brought out that, like, the fact that I can do it, and that it like showed me that I like want to do it more.
Well, congratulations to you, and shout out to Mrs. Gates, who's in the office, or in the audience, and I'm gonna embarrass her for that, the connection to students, right, and for assisting along the way, and extraordinary work. Nice job.
All right. Thank you so much, Shyla.
Thank you.
You are welcome to stay, or if you have homework, whatever you need to do. Or if you're writing the sequel, that's good. See, your editor is already on to the next thing. You're a wonderful editor. I saw that in there. Moving on to scheduled reports, continue to learn plan and SWWC update, Dr. Latch and Dr. Rowe.
Thanks again for Shyla. She did a great job. That's so impressive. Okay, so we're gonna get started with our standard start to continue to learn. We're gonna talk a little bit about where we are with our COVID updates, and then we're gonna turn it over to the main attraction, which is Mr. Rowe, Dr. Rowe tonight, who does a great job with the SWWC program. Okay, so as we can see, we continue to see a low number of cases across Washtenaw County, which is still very positive news as we continue to work through the pandemic. And as we look at our graph, our chart that we've been looking at from COVID Act Now, we are moving into an area where we're hopefully moving into the medium transmission phase here with a low positive test rate count. We hope that that trend continues. We're obviously moving towards spring break. With a lot of travel, we are gonna have to use caution, and as we come back into the schools after, we're hoping we don't see, you know, heightened case count, but we will be ready to continue to respond accordingly, like we've been doing throughout the school year. In terms of our dashboard, we have three students in isolation right now and one staff member. So those low numbers continue, which is very good news. In terms of the transmission chart, from last time we were in medium, now we're in low. We're in a low, we're in a low transmission phase as these new metrics largely are looking at, again, hospital count, COVID patients, number of people vaccinated across the county and so forth, and most of Michigan's low right now, which is also good news. And so that's it for that, and we're gonna move right into Dr. Rowe. He's gonna come and talk to us about all the wonderful things going on in the SWWC program.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Latch, and President Stebbin, and the rest of the Board of Education for allowing me a few minutes to provide kind of a state of CTE, and what we are offering not only to the students that we serve at Celine Area Schools, but also the other consortium districts of Chelsea, Dexter, Lincoln, Manchester, and Mylan. Fair to say, it's been an interesting two-year journey in education, and certainly career technical education is no exception to that when students sign up for authentic, relevant experiences. We've kind of, I like to say persevered over the last year and a half. We functioned with a hybrid setting, but facilitated that through six different schedules with different asynchronous days, and I think we did quite well. So we combined the technical and academic skills, but more importantly, by seeing students every other day, we checked in their well-being, and students coming from six different districts, we were able to do that, and I think we did that successfully, and I thank the faculty and staff for their help with that. We like to say preparing tomorrow's essential employees today. Pre-COVID, we already had an employee shortage. We had individuals that were retiring. We had an aging population, low birth rate, and then all of a sudden, COVID hit and basically accentuated that issue. So rather than 65-year-olds that were retiring, we now had 50 to 55-year-olds that were eligible and chose to retire, and of course, we see that in education with bus drivers and substitute teachers, but I see that each and every day throughout all industries, whether that's automotive, or healthcare, or IT. And so, the calls that I receive are, I need help today, not three months from now. So we'll talk about that tonight. What we couldn't do when we were living through COVID, in the heart of it, was kind of show students what they would be able to experience through career technical education. So they couldn't see, smell, taste with culinary, hear the experiences that they might have mostly at Celine, but in other areas like Chelsea, where we offer robotics, and IT, cybersecurity, and healthcare. And so, throughout the state of Michigan, career technical education enrollment took a significant dip in enrollment, because we basically could not showcase the great things that were happening in career technical education. But we're back, and we're back stronger than ever with career technical education, and momentum is on our side, and I want to just take a couple minutes to tell you how we got to where we're at today with a 38% increase in applications compared to last year. We had, we went out to all of the local districts, so we went to Lincoln, and we sat in Manchester's auditorium, and we had a promotional video, about 20 minutes, that Mr. Bush and Video News Production students did really quick when we arrived in the fall. So they hopped on that, and then about six weeks later, we were visiting those districts, and it's about a 30-second spotlight of every program, and the students go into every program, and out to the building trades site, and the Chelsea location, and the Dexter, and they filmed that, and they have the instructor and students talk about those opportunities. So we visited, that was kind of the first step, and then we offered for the very first time an SWWC open house and business showcase. So we had over 40 businesses, from Lieber Aerospace, to Chelsea Lumber Company, to Lefty's Cheesesteak out of Ann Arbor, that were with us that evening, and turned out to be a tremendous opportunity for students and their family to join us. The Celine Area Chamber of Commerce, who we're partnering with and have been for over two years to schedule this event, were a proud supporter of this activity. So 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students from those consortium districts came and visited after seeing the promotional video, and currently enrolled students were there as well. Offered an opportunity for students to see the lab, talk to the teacher, and visit with those that are currently in the industry looking to employ students now or in the future. So here was the first time that we had offered an open house and business showcase, the first time that you offer anything, you don't know how that will turn out. It was tremendous success. We had 650 individuals participate, over 37 businesses. They had engagement stations and a passport to their future. So immediately following this, they came back, the sophomores came back, and they visited their top two programs, and they were able to see and smell and taste the programs that they wanted to visit, and subsequently, we had a 38% increase in applications for programming. So when you have that demand, you better increase supply. So how do we respond accordingly? Mr. Bramer, Alex Bramer, took over for Don Gillo, who retired mid-year, and Alex Bramer is going to offer accounting with a twist. So before, we had Kara Stumber, that's teaching marketing, which is a fantastic program. Enrollment is at capacity. If a student has marketing but wants to start a small business, or is a future entrepreneur, what do they do next? Well, rather than just have a straight accounting class, Alex Bramer is offering second, fifth hour entrepreneurship, business, and finance. So we've had students that are in culinary, interested in baking, want to open their own shop. How do they go about doing that to develop a business plan? They could have Mr. Bramer. With the help of the Reddies Foundation, they are a proud supporter of us at the SWWC and Celine Area Schools. They donated money that transformed our computer-integrated manufacturing lab, and that lab has only offered SIM in second hour. We've expanded that to second and fifth. So we will offer that second, fifth hours, rather than just one hour a day. CAD that was offered with Mr. Vasloff will be offered also morning and afternoon. We just received official approval last week for our IT cybersecurity program with Jason Rickly up at Chelsea location, so we will have Celine students traveling to Chelsea in the same building that Dr. Helber has, through Bond, renovated that facility with cybersecurity, robotics, and health science. Speaking of robotics, that's offered, it's a new program this year. We have students that have traveled up there from Celine and will next year as well. Cosmetology. So cosmetology is unique. We offer that in the morning with the consortium districts, and then Ann Arbor, we partner with them in the afternoon. If Ann Arbor doesn't fill all of their slots, we can help Ann Arbor by having students attend in the afternoon to fill those empty slots, and we, of course, have strong demand. Collision repair, the only secondary collision repair program is offered at IPSI, and for high school students. We have one Celine student that took advantage of an open slot this year. Next year, we have 10 slots in the consortium in case a student said, that's really what I would like to do, is be in collision repair rather than a standard automotive program. We had 81 applicants for our health science position program that earns their CNA throughout. So 40 students are able to attend the health science program, 20 in the morning in Chelsea, 20 in the afternoon in Celine. Well, that leaves 41 students who are interested in health sciences or in health occupation. So this Thursday, we're interviewing, and we're trying to launch an exercise science program for this fall, that those 41 students would have the opportunity to attend. It would have an introduction to athletic training, physical therapy, and EMT with aligned certifications. So we're interviewing, and we have three potential candidates for that program, hopefully launch that in the fall. So that's expanding our supply so that we can try to meet the demand. But what if you're not an 11th and 12th grader, because that's what we serve through the consortium? What if you're a ninth or 10th grader, or an 11th or 12th grader at Celine, but you don't necessarily enroll in a consortium program? Here are the introductory classes that we have at Celine High School for Celine students, that they can enroll in these programs, leading to the capstone experience through the SWWC. And just for instance, if you are in second or fifth hour culinary, as an 11th or 12th grader, but you're a Celine student as a freshman or sophomore, junior or senior, there are trimester classes of Intro to Foods and Intro to Baking. There were 153 students that were interested in Intro to Foods, and 187 on Intro to Baking, just as introductory classes. Same with welding. So if you want to take metals leading to welding, or autotronics, or engine fundamentals leading to automotive, or project lead the way human body systems leading to health science or exercise science, here's the opportunities that our students have at Celine to lead to these capstone experiences as an 11th or 12th grader, and that's tremendous. But what if you're a middle school student? What do you do if you're excited about career opportunities and you're a middle school student? This is the first year that the consortium will be partnering with Community Education to offer summer career exploration camps. So Jeff Rittenhouse will be offering Intro to Power Tools for Building Trades. We've got our baking camps that have been offered through Chef Phelps in past years. Alex Bramer, brand-new teacher, entrepreneurship, business, and finance, will be teaching a Small Business Essentials class, and Intro to Personal Finance and Adulting class for Understanding Finances. And then Steve Vasloff, a Computer Aided Design class. So that's going to launch. Enrollment will happen on, I think it's open April 4th, and tremendous support from Celine Community Education to tie us in with some of those camps. Career and Economic Development. So Celine Area Chamber has been a strong supporter of ours. We've met with Alex Bramer, with the International Business Class, and talked about what we can do to partner with him, with our students, through business opportunities. But in this picture, you will see Cindy Elliott, who is the president of IHA. She is a Mylan graduate, and came through our Health Occupations class through the consortium. So she reached out, actually, we've been communicating for the last two years, looking at potential partnerships, and this is where it ties in. If we have juniors that are going through our consortium programs, whether that's Building Trades or Health Science, welding, we don't necessarily need those students back for a second year in that program, although we'd like that. We want to put them with an employer. So Cindy says, if we have Health Science students, their junior year, they earn their CNA, their senior year, they could take their classes at Celine, or Dexter, or Chelsea, but if they're done with their classes at 11:00 AM, they can work in any IHA location in any specialty area they're interested in, and be paid. Same with welding. If a welding student goes through our welding programs, and their senior year, they have two classes in the morning at 11:00 AM, they say, I'm done for the day. I'd like to go to Lieber Aerospace and start welding, and have a paid internship, tuition reimbursement, I can do that. Building Trades. We have twice as many students that have applied for Building Trades as we have spots, so to have a junior who successfully completed the program, has their OSHA certificate, come back for a second year, I'd love to see you again. However, we have electricians, we have HVAC, plumbers that are looking for viable employees, and we have students that frankly, part of their senior year could be an authentic, relevant work-based learning experience where they could be getting paid, and potentially have employment while going to a post-secondary institution. So really pleased with Cindy Elliott, IHA, and our other programs and employers that are looking to us to be that talent pipeline. If you're interested in that podcast that Evan conducted, Talk of the Town, that's posted on my Twitter page, feel free to listen to that. It's well worth the 10 minutes to understand Cindy's background and her passion regarding placing our students in employment. As always, the CTE alignment with Celine Area Schools' compass. What better way to have students communicate and collaborate and create, think critically, than to have them engaged in our career technical education programs? Ironically, the learning space, education, and industry-related practices with tech integration, we sometimes, we struggle with that, and a lot of times, it has to do with funding. So, it's interesting when an opportunity presents itself for you to apply through the state for a Career Technical Education Equipment Grant. Miranda was instrumental in us receiving this grant, over a half million dollars, and SWWC received $287,000 of that grant. So these are some of the items that were purchased through the grant. Those in Bold Health Science, and CAD, and SIM, Engineering Robotics, there were areas that were recognized by the state as strong areas that we had to spend at least half of our grant funds, because there are tremendous employment opportunities where we need folks tomorrow. So you can see, everything from cosmetology, to SIM, to CAD, and then we will transform functionally four classrooms, Video News Production, Video Imaging Technology with Mr. Rodriguez, Entrepreneurship, Business, and Finance with Mr. Bramer, and then with our Careers in Education classroom with Sheila Camerata. Those four classes will be transformed through technology applications, along with all of this equipment. Community Connections, again, on the Twitter handle, and I think Steve sent this out, after two years of renovating a home with Habitat, we finally had the dedication, home dedication this past week. It's a 30-minute home dedication with Latoya Carroll and her daughter that moved into the home. Obviously, some trials and tribulations through COVID, but we finally have that happen. So please, it's 30 minutes, well worth the listen. Some history of Habitat, and then certainly with the family, and at the end, there's a tour of the house. So to see the beginning and the end was pretty remarkable. I think that is it for me. A lot to cover in a quick amount of time. Excited about the future of CTE and the SWWC, certainly with our tremendous enrollment, and really, from this point until the end of the school year, we will concentrate on that enrollment process, develop some waitlists, and then I will stay in touch with the local district counselors throughout the remainder of, not only the spring, but throughout the summer as openings occur and we move students into those spots. Questions you may have?
Thank you, Ryan. Congratulations, I think, for incredible success. Thank you for your leadership and all of the staff and the students involved in these programs. I'm really proud of so much that I'm seeing. I can't wait to watch the video since I was able to be in the house. Susan, and I think we went the same day to see the house when it was being built, so thank you for that invitation, and just congratulations on a first successful open house. I'm sure that'll be repeated. Let us know. Wonderful. And thank you for including the community ad, the Summer Bulletin, because it's so important to get more and more students involved, especially in personal finance and adulting, if you want my opinion. Who would like to ask questions or have comments for Ryan? Yeah, Michael?
I don't know if you were there. I tried, I crashed my drone trying to do a good video of that house, but it's since fixed and ready to go. So here's my question. I noticed at the bottom of your logo, there are the six main districts, but I was delighted to hear that we have students going up to Ann Arbor for cosmetology, and IPSI for collision repair. So, does that cause any issues jurisdictional or otherwise to go to other districts? And are there other districts that they go to beyond Washtenaw Districts?
Yeah. No, right now, really, there's a couple of exceptions. So our cosmetology program is housed here, actually, across by Bird Awakenings, and so we partner with Ann Arbor on that. We've had an agreement with them for quite some time. And then, of course, our Building Trades Program housed in Ypsilanti Onsite, houses to be dependent, and then Collision Repair, first year that we've entered with that agreement. So 98% of the time, it really is the six consortium districts with a couple of exceptions.
I have two quick things. The first is Cindy is a dear friend of mine, and she cannot say enough about that partnership and about how excited she is about that. And interestingly enough, she was talking a little bit about how IHA is a big business, so they need lots of different kinds of folks. So people in business, and marketing, and accounting, all of those different kinds of trades, not just students who have the CNA. So that's really exciting. So, that's really exciting for us and for her too. So, the other thing that I was wondering about, I have two juniors. Do the students find out about their applications when schedules come out? Or are they notified sooner? How does that work?
Yep, they're notified after spring break.
Okay.
And they'll be notified by the counselors. And in the meantime, we're really looking if a student doesn't get placed in their first choice for a variety of different reasons. It could be due to their schedule or whatever they're taking. We look at their second choice, which is often listed on that application. So, shortly after spring break, we will let the students know and then we'll do some guidance and counseling after that.
Great. I have a junior who's, or sophomore, who's anxiously awaiting.
Yep.
We're excited to be a part of your programs.
Yep. And just a comment about Cindy Elliott. We often think about IHA and it is nursing or its health occupations. But we've talked a lot about the accounting portion and some other aspects, facilities that they have. So, really, our goal is to have the students exit their junior year if they've successfully completed their career technical education program. We'd like them to learn and then earn. Learn and earn. It doesn't mean they have to enter employment. It's a stackable opportunity. So, graduate with a certificate, two-year college, four-year college. You can do all of three of those and for one or the other. So, thank you.
So, I have a number of things. But first of all, you should be excited, right? And I could tell you, somebody who's really excited is my son, like who is looking at this course offerings book. And it's incredible, the number of things that we offer for our students to have experiences and to leave with high-level knowledge of things. And everything we do that I've seen has been top-notch, whether it's the Habitat for Humanity House. We were fortunate to have a retreat with, you know, food that was catered for us. And I mean, I'm telling you folks, like these crab cakes, they were outstanding. Like, I mean, outstanding. I took some home. Like, they were outstanding. So, like, I applaud you that we not only just offer all these things, they're high-level. They're incredibly good programs. I have a couple of questions. So, number one is about slot determination, right? You talked about how, you know, we have more than we can offer, right? So, I have three things. One, slot determination. Two, have we had any long-term strategic planning models developed so that we can start to think three years out, five years out, so we can meet some of these demands? So, I guess I'm asking you those two things.
Yep. So, slot swaps determined by the 9th through 12th grade enrollment. So, for instance, Celine is the largest district and Manchester is the smallest. And so, in a class of 24, Celine gets a certain amount of slots, all the way down Dexter, Chelsea, Manchester, Mylan, and Lincoln. If a district does not take advantage of those slots that they are allocated, then another district can scoop them up. And we, I, meet with all of the counselors with Mary Viesel and Administrative Assistant Emily Cook. And we go through that prior to, actually, just after the enrollment process, a couple of weeks ago. And then if a district doesn't take advantage of some of those, then others can pick those up. Last year, I think we had a fill rate of about 92% of our slots were filled, which seems good. That's an A-, but this year, it's our goal every year to reach that A+, that 100%. I meet with the SWWC principals, all six, on a monthly basis to talk about each and every day of operations along with forward thinking. And then I meet with the superintendents quarterly, the six superintendents that I report to, quarterly to talk about strategic planning. So, when we do that, I bring a proposed budget in June. We'll talk about the budget, obviously, after July 1. And then we talk about those expanded programs. I'm also working with U of M Youth Policy Lab on what economic opportunities regarding equity and access to CTE programs do we have to provide countywide? So, I work with Ann Arbor and I work with IPSY and Whitmore Lake along with the consortium districts to see, are we filling that talent pipeline? And are we providing that equity and access to all students throughout the county, Brad?
Let me think about determining regional employee need. Was that due to survey? Was that due to, like, how did you get that feedback?
Yep. So, we really work with the state on that and then with our employers. So, that data is presented as a region. So, we work with Jackson County, Washtenaw, Livingston County to determine what those needs are, what's the economic and employment outlook for those? How many replacements and how many retirements do we have coming? So, quite a bit of research goes into that. And then the state let us know, in particular for this grant, what opportunities we would have through finances and what we need to spend 50% of those on. It really aligned with our programs, to be honest, and where we see that need.
Well, thank you. And you and the SWWC staff do an outstanding job. I can't say it enough. So, thank you again.
Thanks.
Yep. Susan?
Thank you for your presentation. And yes, I was excited to see the house and then taste the food. And actually, it was Inclusion Week. And one of the chefs, her name...
Chef Phelps, Chef Danielle?
Thank you. Yes, Phelps. Well, and the whole team, really. For Inclusion Week, because I am vegan, we made, there were tarts and we were making, you know, using the torch. But since I'm vegan, she had made one just for me and explained it to us as well as the students that she was, had been working with, for them to see the texture and how she could get, you know, get that prepared just as equally with it being vegan. And I thought that was really nice. Usually, I'm expecting maybe some fruit. Or I get it and it's not vegan. So, that was really exciting. And so, I had some questions about, I'm excited that you're offering classes to like the general student population. That's pretty exciting. Or those who can't get into the program to allow them to get those skills. And, oh, so the application. What are the qualifications that you're looking for? You know, I'm sure we don't want to base it solely on grades or... So, you know, I just wanted to know how you pick the students.
It's a great question. And it really depends on the program. So, for Health Sciences in particular, there really are prerequisites academically that we need a student to engage with. We also look at discipline and attendance because part of that CNA program and the Cosmetology Program both are licensed by the state. So, they have requirements that we have to look at beyond just our own guidelines. So, they also interview. Arlene Colfall interviews those students. And of course, we consult with the local guidance counselors. I call them the gatekeepers that know these students very, very well. Building Trades, we interview. We look at academics and discipline and attendance. Cosmetology, look at purpose and passion that those students have, in particular because they spend three hours a day, their junior and senior year, towards those 15 hours of licensing. So, that's a huge commitment. And part of that interview process is not just interviewing the student, but them interviewing us to understand the expectations that they have as part of that program. Others, like Video News Production and Visual Imaging, maybe students that have taken some of the prerequisite courses as a freshman or sophomore and know that's their purpose and passion. So, it really depends on the program and the requirements that are aligned with that program, such as licensing with the CNA.
Cool. Thank you. And I know I could talk with you all day about all of this stuff. But as far as the summer programs and offering to middle schools, middle schoolers and maybe some high schoolers as well, I'm hoping I could take Intro to Power Tools. So, I don't know if it's open to community members, but...
I'm trying to talk to the faculty about having not only these summer exploration camps for middle school, elementary, high school age students, but potentially offering some, and we talked about it that night in Culinary. We'd like to have some adult learning classes for some of our CTE program, basic maintenance for automotive or culinary. So, I'm working on that.
All right, sign me up.
Yeah, okay.
Just a quick question. So, you mentioned the Careers in Education pathway. And as we all know, there's a teacher shortage right now. And I've been, I've been doing some work with the State Department of Education on Future Proud Michigan Educators and, you know, new pathways with the, within CTE to open up opportunities for early childhood educators and out-of-school-time educators and things. So, I'm curious, here in Celine, what we're thinking about or with SWWC, what you're thinking about in terms of specific ways to expand the education, Careers in Education program?
So, Careers in Education is interesting because I think, more importantly than all, we have to communicate to students through the last two years, this is a great profession. There are great opportunities beyond just being a teacher. And we need counselors, we need administrators, we need school psychologists, and we need speech therapists. And so, our Careers in Education program, really, we took a little dip with enrollment, but enrollment's back up in our Careers in Education program. And it really, we had a conversation earlier today with Teresa Stager about how our other programs through Family Consumer Sciences, like Learning to Breathe and Mindfulness, tie in with Careers in Education. And so, we're looking for alignment with not only Careers in Education in particular, but connecting and Learning to Breathe and all of the other programs that really, we hope to empower students to be our educators now and then in the future regarding mindfulness and what educating really looks like, but through powerful curriculum like that. That, talking about the mental health of students and adults as, and using our students as a catalyst to deliver that message. So, powerful things to come in Careers in Education. Just had a conversation about this morning, more to come in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Ryan? Thank you so much. Anything that's going on that you would like support from the board on with attending to support staff and students, please email us and let us know.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Moving on to action items. One action item tonight, I'd like to please entertain a motion to appoint the Teaching and Learning Team to serve in the capacity of District Professional Development Advisory Committee under Section 101, 10 of the State School Aid Act, MCL 388.1701, as recommended by Teaching and Learning Team Lead Cara Davis. Doing so will allow greater flexibility with the professional development hours while also maintaining cohesion of professional development programming. Can I call for a motion?
So moved, Miller.
Thank you, Jenny.
Second, Gerbi.
Thank you very much. Discussion, Cara, did you want to say anything? Or Steve?
Thanks. I really appreciate you considering. I want to make myself available for questions, if you have any about the motion. It is something that in my partnership with Miranda, I'll give her another shout-out tonight in helping us to unpack some of the per pupil requirements at the state level, just realizing that we benefit from having officially on board record in a Professional Development Advisory Committee. And my recommendation for the Teaching and Learning Team to assume that responsibility is because we've been doing that work across the last four years. So, I can say that we predated Michigan's act in this way. We are already operating in this capacity. And so, I'd like us to be able to move forward with that on the books so that we can continue to plan great professional learning for our teachers, which has been one of the number-one requests across the feedback in the last couple of years. Is the time to really dig in, work on implementation, collaborate with peers, and continue to learn on some of the priorities we have as a district.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Cara? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions or comments, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. Moving on to discussion items, Vice President McVeigh, our Policy Committee Chair, with an update.
We met this evening and I have a lot of homework to do, apparently. We are discussing several things in Neola Updates. We have issues with 13 policies on the books right now that include actual names of employees when best practices suggest otherwise. But again, nothing's clear-cut. In addition, we're also looking at, beginning a conversation about the elimination of a policy, recommended elimination of a policy perhaps. And we're in a standing agenda situation as we work each week as we get closer and closer to working on our board operating procedures. So, I have nothing more to report, nothing concrete yet, but we are meeting again on April 26th, if not sooner. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Any comments additionally from Jenny or Susan on the committee? Any questions from anyone on the board? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Administration Updates, Dr. Latch.
I have three quick ones tonight. We wanted to recognize that it was World Down Syndrome Day on March 21st, being supported by our Celine High School Connecting Class. And Monday, the reason why, March 21st, is because it's celebrated on this day because it's describing that Down Syndrome is the third replication of the 21st chromosome. And it's to bring awareness and inclusion to people with Down Syndrome. And therefore, high school students and staff were encouraged to Rock Your Socks Day, meaning to support that, which was neat, to show off the funniest, brightest, and most unique socks. So, you know, that's Trish Fair and her program there at the high school. They do a terrific job of really doing a nice job of including all our students. I want to thank the Foundation for Celine Area Schools. We had a great event last night at Max. And it was to talk about the vision and direction of the district. So, we had many Foundation supporters there, which was terrific. David Raft and I attended. And I want to publicly thank everybody who attended the event. But Wally and Cindy, who run Max, do such a great job of supporting the efforts of the district, which is terrific. Anne Hurst and the Foundation for putting on a great event. Jennifer attended, which was terrific. And in particular, which was a highlight that I was talking to Dr. Rowe the other day about, was that Chef Brendan Nels-Frumpkin. Actually, he went through the Southwest Washtenaw Consortium Culinary Program, went on to school at a culinary college, so to speak, and then has now made his way back as the executive chef and really credited a lot of that success to the CTE and SWWC program and gave a really inspiring presentation regarding that. Spoke about the opportunities he had because of that and now wants to make sure he's giving back to the culinary students within the program to coordinate, whether that's visits to Max or, you know, he would go there and help with that program. But it's just, you know, it's great how that's come full circle. And I think that, and he was really pleased to hear that, you know, 38% increase in potential enrollment for the program because he could see the value and that there are so many students that are wanting to get involved in CTE trades and so forth. So, that was terrific. And then just finally, I hope everyone has a really fun and safe spring break coming up.
Great. Julian isn't with us tonight, so I'll move to trustee comments if anyone would like to make a announcement. Yeah, Brad?
I just have one. Last night, banderauma happened over at the high school. And I want to say how much fun it was to see all of the different groups, like, and you could see a progression, right? All the way from Ghostbusters, all the way up to the marching band who marched the track. And I will tell you, like, I was just thrilled to be there. And I think strings are happening as we speak right now. And I just want to give a shout-out to our music programs because they do an outstanding job and they're such an important part of the entire education of our students. And I was just thrilled to be there last night. So, shout-out and thanks to them.
Thanks. I attended the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce on Wednesday morning with Dr. Latch, who had to leave a little early for something else, which was really cool. But our, three of our robotics, Celine Singularity students were there speaking to talk about the upcoming robotics competition. And I've got to tell you, the Chamber of Commerce were absolutely blown away by the poise and the information that we shared from our robotics team. They were wonderful. Carter Harris is one of the students. Sadly, I can't remember the rest of them, but they were also there. They're all great. In addition, I wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Anderson's class, who hosted a genius hour at Heritage a few weeks back. And the Washtenaw Association of School Boards had their Learning Lab on social-emotional learning for superintendents. And I believe at least one of our board members was there, Valencia Cade and Sarah Giddings hosted it. And it went very well, I think. I was very impressed and we hope to do more of that sort of programming in the future.
Anyone else? Yeah, Susan.
Yes. I have a few updates. So, this past week...
So this past week, I attended the Sex Education Advisory Board, known as CEB. And so it felt like a fresh renewal, because one of the committee meetings, I believe, was canceled this past month. So, you know, we, you know, I guess, kind of came back and and, you know, got some icebreaker type stuff. But one of the things we did, or the advisory board did, was explore what questions they would like to ask students, parents, teachers, and so, you know, had the sticky notes and all of that. And it was really interesting to see the similar questions that they would, you know, everybody would like, and how there was overlap between, you know, asking parents and and teachers kind of similar questions. So I thought that was a great meeting. I, apparently in my free time, I like to listen to and attend webinars, or senate and house committee meetings, or Michigan Department of Education, anyways. So I attended the MASP Members Matters webinar last week. And so they were just addressing some interesting topics with other boards across the state, legal guidance from Brad Bassnick. And so that was good. I attended the Michigan House Committee on Appropriations Subcommittee on School Aid and Department of Education, and they were talking about funding for for school security. That's an item that that caught my interest. And then today, the Senate Committee on Education and Career Readiness. Our Senator Jeff Irwin actually worked on some, sorry, some revisions to some bills, and it was regarding dyslexia and incorporating that into the, you know, the bills as far as training and being aware of that early on when you're testing students. So it was sponsored by Republicans and Democrats, and it was great, and had like seven zero support in the committee, so that was pretty exciting. And then last but not least, I attended the Moash BAM Pride Summit. And so it's for middle and high schoolers from across Michigan who are involved in GSAs at their schools. And it was just an amazing turnout with lots of students really coming together and bouncing ideas off of how to support one another with gay straight alliances in their schools. And then, of course, there was also some advisors and some adult tracks to take as well. So I tuned into those. But yeah, it was it was great, and I'm glad they offer that in the state of Michigan.
I just had a couple of quick things. First of all, I wanted to echo what Dr. Latch said about thanking the Foundation for Celine Area Schools, all of the volunteers, donors, and particularly Chef Brandon, Cindy and Wally at Max. Thank you very much. Also wanted to give a shout out to Dean Garbers in Pleasant Ridge. Stop by Pleasant Ridge's science fair on the way to Max, and it is always such a wonderful organized event, and the students are just beaming with smiles. And usually, they try to work in some type of food, so I had cotton candy, Skittles, Oreos. There were all sorts of things. I love it when they use food as part of their science project, so very, very cool, very nice job, Mr. Garbers, who is a third grade teacher at Pleasant Ridge. Moving on to our consent agenda, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any any one or all be considered individually. A, approval of the Board of Education regular meeting minutes for March 8th, 2022. B, approval of the Board Finance Committee meeting minutes of March 8th, 2022. C, approval of the Board of Education emergency meeting minutes of March 14th, 2022. C, approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of March 22nd, 2022 in the amount of $621,773.24. D, approval of payment of bond series three accounts payable of March 22nd, 2022 in the amount of $425,793.81. E, receive and file the finance and human resources report. And F, the approval of overnight and or out of state field trips as submitted by Superintendent Latch. Number 89, the Science Olympiad MSU Competition in Lansing from April 29th to 30th, 2022. Number two field trip, number 91, the debate competition on Mackinac Island, Michigan from May 20th to 20th to 22nd, 2022. And number three, field trip, number 111, SWWC in Grand Rapids, Michigan, April 8th through 10th, 2022.
So moved, McVeigh.
Thank you, Michael. Second?
Second.
Susan, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Items scheduled on our next agenda.
We are going to have a presentation of Weber-Blessed One Room Schoolhouse.
Yay.
Cheryl Heft. And then we're also going to have, in our teaching and learning team, Shannon Washington presenting on culturally responsive instruction.
All right, thank you. This is our second opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Miranda, did you have any more forms? Okay, excellent. Seeing no students, we did have one one parent, Tom Alig. If you'd like to approach the podium, just make sure to toggle the button on. You'll see the green light. Secretary Jones will be our timekeeper. So when you're approaching, 30 seconds before your three minutes, she'll show you a yellow card, and then if you see the red one, just complete your thought, and we're all set.
Perfect, thank you. My name is Tom Alig. I have two daughters in the high school, a senior and a sophomore. My oldest daughter most likely will not be able to attend her high school graduation, not because of illness or various other reasons. She most likely won't be able to attend because she excels at running, and the state track meet is on the west side of the state on Saturday morning, June 4. A year ago at this time, the district calendar showed graduation to be on Sunday, June 5, excuse me, as has been the norm for a long time. In August, the graduation date was changed to Friday, June 3. This poses a problem for my daughter and her track teammates. The state track meet is held each year on the west side of the state on the first Saturday of June. This year, it will be Saturday, June 4. Every year, Celine track athletes participating in the state track meet leave on Friday morning so that they can properly be prepared to compete on Saturday morning. With graduation on Friday, my daughter and several of her classmates have been put into an awful, awful predicament. I led a process in the fall to have conversations with Mr. Raft about the ramifications and to see what could be done to keep graduation on Sunday. My daughter and three of her classmates met with Mr. Raft to discuss the issue, and it was clear that graduation was going to remain on Friday. Given a Friday graduation, Mr. Raft was open to ideas, and what was ultimately decided upon is that track seniors who are going to state meet can graduate on Friday morning during graduation rehearsal. A few of us parents then met with Mr. Raft as a follow up, and he reiterated, excuse me, reiterated what he told the students, and he was very open to family members and so forth, being able to attend the Friday morning event. This is nice, but it's not what my daughter and her teammates deserve. At this point in time, I do not expect the 2022 graduation is going to change, although I would I would be more than happy if that did. My concern is for the future. I don't want graduation to remain on Friday in future years so that other track athletes are put into the same situation. This does affect track athletes every year. Celine has a terrific track and field program, and athletes participate in the state meet every year. Many track parents I have spoken with and communicated with strongly oppose the Friday night graduation. I have heard that track parents have signed off on what I have discussed tonight. This is a partial truth. Parents and students signed off on it because we essentially had no other option. Our choices were threefold. One, to have our kids graduate Friday night and totally disrupt one of the biggest track meets of their lives. Or two, not attend their graduation. Or three, graduate at Friday morning rehearsal. I cannot stress enough how much conversation and angst has resulted from the decision to move graduation to Friday night. I am here to be clear and to state for the record, as the parent who led the conversation in the fall, that I am deeply disappointed that graduation will be on Friday night, and I've talked with many of the track parents who feel the same way. Thank you.
Tom, thank you for sharing your feedback. Our next meeting, the next regular Board of Education meeting, will be held in April 12th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. We will now move into closed session. This is for superintendent evaluation. It's something that we will become be doing routinely, quarterly, one annual, one annual superintendent evaluation using the MASP tool, and then three other quarterly check ins. I'd like to please entertain a motion to enter closed session of the Board of Education at 7:30 PM, with the intent to reopen open session at approximately 7:50 PM. For the purpose of superintendent evaluation, section 8A, under section 8A, a simple majority vote is sufficient to enter into a closed session. We will not have any other board business after closed session. May I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Candace, thank you.
Support.
Susan, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. We are in closed session. If everyone can check their mics, we can turn the audio off, and if everyone could take their belongings out of the boardroom, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are back. At 8:03, we had a recommended motion to re-enter open session made by trustee Miller and seconded by treasurer Gerby. So we are back. I'd now like to entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting of March 22, 2022 at 8:04 p.m. I'll make that motion.
Jenny, thank you.
Support.
Support Susan, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned.